Okay, I want to call this meeting to order. This is the Grand Terrace County Board of Commissioners. Today is Wednesday, May 28, 2014. If we could turn off all cell phones, I would appreciate that. And we may rise for the opening ceremonies. The prayer first.
Hail to God, we thank you tonight for sacrament and sacrifice that the veterans of our country, men and women, who gave the ultimate sacrifice to protect our freedom. We know freedom is not free. And we thank you that you dwell amongst us and we could see your face and be healed by your hands. We thank you for your church that guides your spirit in our hearts today. And most of all, we thank you that you save us when we die. You're our hero guard, along with our veterans. Amen.
Mr. Inman?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Inman?
Here.
Lathrop?
Here.
Max Bauer?
Here.
Rennie?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Limko?
Here.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Commissioners' regular session on April 30, 2014, minutes as presented.
Support? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried.
Who supported that?
Wheelock. I'm sorry. Next is first public comment. Would you read the rules, please?
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comments shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. A, any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. B, no person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
You've heard the rules. Is there anybody from the public who would like to make a comment? In the front here, please. Step up the podium, give your name and address.
My name's Clifton Meery. Address 2920 East Park Ridge Court, Traverse City, Michigan. It's quite rightly, the county should be proud of hosting Northwestern Michigan College. College has a lot of benefits and opportunities that it brings to this area. However, I've got to say that that college is rife with misgovernance and misconduct. And I am asking for the Commissioners and the public who the college serves to please view the videos of the Board of Trustees' minutes that are now on the college website. I presented my complaints of misconduct, 20 years of discrimination and harassment against me for political purposes at the college. Several of my petitions for protest to the trustees have gone unrecognized. They are not recorded in the minutes. That college deals fairly, openly. They are false dealing and secretive. At the May meeting, May 19th, when the minutes were approved, my public input was recognized only by name. The college has no standard behavior of how they recognize public input. And I've called upon them to standardize that and to make sure that the topics that are addressed to them are recorded properly. And I hope that the comments that I have made to those trustees about the serious allegations of deceit, conspiracy, false filings to investigative agencies be investigated. It's simply, they don't even recognize it. They don't even make it part of the public comment record. These people need to be monitored, viewed, and taken to task. I ask you Commissioners to help me politically because I've been told repeatedly by the Attorney General's Office and other agencies of free speech and journalistic rights that this is in essence, an autonomous zone. They are answerable to no one but the political body that elects them. And I am here instead of there because those people are not making a complete record. They are not investigating the serious complaints of misgovernance and misconduct that have been brought repeatedly. I hope that the public will become closer monitors of the way the college acts and governs themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Lundey. My residence is 3244 Pembroke Drive, Traverse City, Michigan. I'm here to talk today about the $50 fee and the vote on the waiver that will happen tonight for cremations in Grand Travers County. This fee is for a permit that has to be obtained by Michigan law. The problem that I see with this is that the permit really only seems to be a sign-off by the medical examiner's office for an already licensed person to perform the cremation. So I'm not really entirely sure why we need to pay $50 for this law. As far as I'm concerned, it's a bit of a death tax. Not a single one of you, and I did watch the meeting, raised any concerns about why this money was needed or why this fee was pertaining to a permit that really has, that takes up about five seconds of someone's time to sign something and probably shouldn't be a law to begin with. And no one else has also expressed any other way to pay for potential fees that the medical examiners have had. I can suggest one right now. The combined salary, I believe, of all of you is about 50 grand. Cut that in half and you've got half of these people's needs. So as far as I'm concerned, this law that you've enacted is completely immoral. I'm not even religious. I find it un-Christian and I'm highly outraged. And I really, really want all of you to consider voting to waive not only the fee for the people that you've considered voting for or voting waiving it for, but everyone else as well because it's really unnecessary. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to speak?
Matthew Schuck, 306 West 9th Street, Traverse City, Michigan. First of all, I want to comment on not only the increase in fees that we already talked about here, but just maybe more generally, the county government that, I know the budget and everything that you guys have to face is always a challenge to make ends meet. But I find it really contradictory that a county that can only view citizens of how to get more money out of them to pay for continuing operations when you really need to also consider cutting. Cutting, I think, you know, that's a dirty word that's used today, but cutting that can be done fair and equitably. I realize that a lot of our economic problems aren't your guys' fault and it's certainly not anybody in Traverse City, but the dollar doesn't go as far as it has in the past because the dollar has lost value. So therefore, the purchasing value of that dollar shrinks and therefore, you're going to need more money. But I find it not a very smart thing to basically have a death tax on people. You know, what next? New babies coming in? We can maybe gouge out a few extra $50 fees from births in Grand Travers County. But I want to encourage you and all good things to balance the budget and always, and I've spoken on this before, when necessary, it's going to have to come down to cutting. And nobody likes to do that because it never looks good for career advancement when you have to cut. But that takes a lot of courage to do and there's a lot of us out here that are looking for that type of courage. Thank you.
Caleb Nelson, 803 Rose Street, Traverse City, Michigan, 49684. I'd like to second each of the following opinions. And furthermore, I don't think that it's necessary to cut anybody's budget here necessarily as, in my opinion, it's already so small, not to take offense to it. But there are other places we can cut. And in regards to the baby tax, that was actually a good point. And though you guys may see the death tax as being invalid, as we've already had this discussion, it is not invalid because it is along the lines. And so I ask you to take that seriously. And to consider that babies in America today, generally speaking, for each state, is one of $15,000 of debt. To just keep adding where you can is absolutely absurd and it's completely unsustainable. We can't live like that. And then to talk more about the school, I actually, I attended NMC last semester. I'm a prior student of Tokyo International University, where I got my first degree as well. But at NMC, I tried to get the students more rattled up politically. I attempted to create a student political association. And through this, as a student, I found them often dodging any attempt I made to connect directly with the people that I needed to speak to, always out of office, completely unattainable to talk to them in any way. I'd always be talking to students that worked for them, saying that they're always busy, which is completely absurd. They're there to help us and if I can't create something that was nonpartisan, like it wasn't Republican, it wasn't Democrat, I wanted to create a new idea, something that students could look forward to, and for them to just pass that up as a student, it makes it pretty much absurd because if I can't do it, then who can? Because there were some civilians that, well, citizens I should say, that wanted to make a stance politically and I knew they couldn't, so I tried to do it from the inside. But I couldn't do it from the inside. So I'd ask you guys to take that one seriously as well. Thank you.
Anybody else like to?
Bob Johnson, 2867 Voist Road, Kingsley, Michigan, 49649. I just wanted to come up and introduce myself. I've met some of you. I'm running for the county commissioner, District 7, currently held by Mr. Rainey. So I just wanted to have my face shown around here, if you will. And I know it's hard work that you guys do and I know that nothing is taken lightly that you do. You know, any kind of fees or increases or cuts are not easy. So I just wish you well and ask for your support. I'll even ask Charlie to vote for me.
Thank you. Is anybody else like to make public comment? Seeing none, I will go on to the approval of the agenda. Dave, you had some additional?
The budget calendar.
Is on our desk?
I would suggest we add it to number 4, 9A4, right underneath the budget guidelines.
It's on budget guidelines, it's already three.
Yeah, number three is budget guidelines. Number four needs to be budget calendar for 2015.
Budget calendar, okay.
That's, that's.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? Mr. Wheelock?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that under new business, we discuss the possible reconsideration of the cremation tax, cremation fee. I'm sorry.
Where would you like to put that?
Under new business, please.
Under new business.
Under new business, to discuss with the reconsideration of the cremation fee.
Oh. You could just pull it off the, except that's not the fee. All that is is the exemption.
Anything else to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the agenda with those two amendments. Second?
Second by Rennie. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried. Next is the consent calendar. Bonnie, if you could read that, please.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. A, receive and file. Number one, resolution opposing House Bill 5098 and Senate Bill 850, Wexford County. Number two, Economic Development Corporation minutes of March 13. Number three, Airport Commission minutes of March 18. Number four, Veteran Services minutes of March 20. Number five, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority minutes of March 26. Number six, Board of Public Works minutes of April 10. Number seven, Board of Public Works Finance Committee minutes of April 15. Number eight, Veteran Services minutes of April 17. Number nine, Community Action Agency minutes of April 17. Number 10, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health minutes of April 17. Number 11, Traverse Area District Library minutes of April 17. Number 12, Board of Public Works Special Finance minutes of April 29. Number 13, Department of Veteran Services minutes of May 5. Number 14, Commission on Aging minutes of May 6. Approvals. The Public Health and Safety Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 15, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Office Acceptance of Risk Avoidance Program Grant. The Resource Management Administration Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 16, 2014 Holler Licenses. Number 17, Paper and Office Supplies Contract with Office Depot. Ways and Means Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 18, Approval to Post-Lifeguard WSI Position. Number 19, Approval to Post-Office Specialist Position in District Court. Number 20, Approve HR Director to Enter into Contract for Services. Number 21, Budget Adjustments. Number 22, Cremation Fee Waiver. Number 23, Per diem Policy Amended, May 28.
Anybody from the public that would like any of these items removed? Anybody else in the public have any ones removed? Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with the exception of?
The consent calendar.
The consent calendar with the exception of cremation fee number 22. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Roll call. Oh, excuse me, roll call. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Lathrop?
It's that kind.
Yeah.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Rennie?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Inman?
Yes.
Limko?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is special orders of business, which I do not believe there is any. Next is the items removed from consent calendar, which is the cremation fee waiver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andy Merrick, 2875 East Railroad Avenue. The reason I asked you to have this removed from the consent calendar is I'd like you to consider changing the proposal as you've got in front of you. I don't like the fact that you've got veterans that are financially stressed or qualify under the previous requirement. You're adding veterans that meet the DHS requirements, which is also already in the waiver for others. If you're going to have veterans in there, include all veterans. Every veteran who stood up in front of and took the oath of office, was willing to give his life for service of our country, we're talking about $50. I understand that we pay some fees up to, I believe it's $300 from the county's general fund for veterans, but we're talking about another $50. And right now, it's just a feel-good term in my mind when you say veterans that qualify for DHS services. I would really like to see you amend the proposal in front of you to include all veterans, not just those that receive DHS benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the public wish to make comment on that? I think we've heard good comments. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table that item and put it under 11C.
I have a motion to table and put under item 11C, support, or have support? Any discussion on the motion?
Larry, what's the reason for that?
Because we want to deal with the reversal of the fee to begin with.
Okay.
And then if that passes, then we could just turn that one down. If we both reconsider and rescind the cremation fee in the first place, then we don't have to have the waiver.
Right. Okay. Do I have to have a roll call on that? Roll call, please.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Rennie?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Inman?
Yes.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Limko?
Yep.
Okay, that has been moved. Next is Department Action Items, which is Administrator's and Finance's Claims Summary is on your table. Mr. Bott?
Just ask for your approval. These are the May claims in the amount of $8,879,947.21.
I need a motion to approve? Still moved? Support. Who made the motion?
Wheelock.
Wheelock, support by Thomas. Any discussion? All those. Roll call, please.
Rennie?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Inman?
Yes.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Limko?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next is the Michigan Tax Tribunal's Cost Share Update.
Can I go with that?
Yep.
The, I had prepared a proposed policy, but we're still looking at what we're going to propose. We have been approached by Garfield Township regarding a tax appeal on two parcels at the mall, Grand Travers Mall. The amount in dispute is about $11.4 million, which for our general fund means approximately $57,000 a year. Of course, it means a lot to the taxing jurisdiction as well because their mileage is much higher than ours in Garfield Township. The state of Michigan is involved, which means that the Attorney General will be defending the case and will provide legal help, so that's a great help. And I do believe they're going to help us with 50% of the cost of the case as far as appraisals and things like that that might be needed, which could be substantial. It could be upwards of $40,000 to have that place appraised and get ready for the exhibits for trial for that. And Garfield Township has approached us and asked for financial assistance with their share of the costs. I was looking at, we had a meeting yesterday with the equalization department staff, Commissioner Limko, Chairman Limko, myself, Amy from Garfield Township, the assessor, and Chris Forsyth, Deputy Civil Counsel. And on the phone was a gentleman from the Attorney General's Office. We discussed the case. We believe it's a strong case for the taxing jurisdiction. Sometimes these are appealed because the value is just simply not assessed properly and there's some fault on the side of the assessor. In this case, we believe that the assessor did a fair valuation, but apparently, these are being appealed throughout the state. There are attorneys that specialize in this and a lot of taxing jurisdictions just can't afford to go to trial because of the costs. So at any rate, we had, you know, instead of just coming to the board and recommending something for one situation, we're trying to come up with a kind of a policy on how we would approach this. And the way we would approach this policy, and this is just by way of information tonight, we'll bring you something formal to look at and react to. We were thinking that we would have a team, just like we've had in this case, finance, treasury, our treasures department, the equalization department, a member of the Board of Commissioners, my member from administration, meet, figure out what, you know, the strength of the case and whether it's worth pursuing and what the value might be, and then have a formula that we use to determine our financial participation in suits like that to, you know, to help our local units defend these cases that are coming more and more frequently. So that was just, you want to add anything to that?
The only thing I would add is that one of the discussion was, is that if a grant township had a tax tribunal and it affected half their tax base, you know, how far would we get involved when we would have a miniscule amount of dollars that would affect our county, but it would affect the township largely? So that's one of the other issues, is trying to figure that out. So, but I, you know, I just want to say that Amy from Garfield Township has done just an outstanding job with her data collection, what she's accumulated from their website. And I think that, you know, personally, I think the case is probably going to go to a certain level and that's it. So there probably won't be any cost, but if there was, then the cost is for doing an appraisal. And so we could just be able to do that. So, Chris?
I sit on the Michigan Association of Counties Legislative Committee and we've had discussions about this. And we had a representative from the state of Michigan come and tell us that one of the members, and I've said this before, but I'm going to repeat it, one of the members of the tax tribunal markets himself, going out to big box stores and presenting how to get out of, how to substantially lower your property taxes. I think what's important here is that everybody is treated fairly. And that's not what is occurring here. And that is why the Attorney General, in my opinion, is stepping in and saying, look, because if the mall gets a substantial tax break, that puts a burden on all the other taxpayers and an unfair burden. And I agree with Chairman Limko. Amy has done an outstanding job with her documentation. I have spoken with Supervisor Corn about this and I appreciate the fact that you're bringing this forward and I especially appreciate that we're going to have a policy.
And that will be on the agenda for next month, so we don't have to make any decision today. Sonny?
Well, just as my memory is probably going fast, but in previous years, we've seen tax tribunals of large amounts coming from utilities, you know, for years and years. Utilities are the biggest, the biggest people that have went to the Michigan Tax Tribunal to get tax relief. It's, and utilities is one of those, it's really strange because they give us the value of what they have in each of the townships and each of the counties and we tax it based on the value that they gave us and then they go and appeal it. But that being said, this is completely different than that because those utilities have minimal service requirements. When you talk about something like Grand Travers Mall, the number of public dollars that go into providing, you know, services there for, you know, if nothing less than just the police protection for the people that are shoplifting there and policing accidents that happen in the parking lots. And, you know, the alarms that go off in the middle of the night because somebody forgot to open the wrong door, you know, all of those things require public service. You know, the utilities, as a general rule, the amount of public service and the public dollars that are being used to fund those services is very minimal. But when we talk about something like the Grand Travers Mall, there are thousands and thousands of dollars of public taxpayer money used to provide services to that facility every year. And if we do not, you know, uphold that tax assessment, then we're just going to continue to pay that out of our pocket.
Charlie?
Why do we have all this going on around the state, all these tribunal cases going on on this commercial property? I go over to Grand Travers Mall, I see a lot of vacant stores. I can understand where they're coming from.
Yeah.
And to me, a vacant property shouldn't be taxed in a way as much as one that's occupied. You could look at it that way. We see store after store vacant and I believe that's part of why these tax tribunal things are happening. So I don't think, from what we saw in our SEB report, that our commercial industrial property has stabilized and is now increasing. It still seems to be in somewhat of a free fall. So honestly, I can understand why people are questioning their taxes.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dave.
Just, you know, I don't want to respond to comments, but, you know, the mall was sold in 2012 for $66 million and the taxable value would be half of that, $33 million. and the taxable value would be half of that, $33 million, and she had assessed it at $29 million something. And they want it to be worth $18. So, you know. Yeah, I mean, I think she's, when they say she has good documentation, she has good documentation, it's all off their website. So it's not secret information. These are real estate investment trusts, and they have to report these, the information, and she's dug it all out and said, "I think I got the right number here. Why would we drop it by that much and not, you know, at least challenge the reduction?"
Dean? There's other components to her analysis, and this is the Amy from Garfield, but she's looked at their financial statements, she's looked at occupancy rates, so, and that's one of the reasons why we feel we need to be a little bit more involved in this one. It appears to be a good, a very good case, as far as the value that they're asking for relief on just does not make sense, based on the rules that are in place right now. And just, it's not just, and Dave brought up a very good point, it was, it has changed hands, and that sales value supports this as well, so.
Chris?
I appreciate Commissioner Rennie's comments, but one of the things that was brought out, again, at the Michigan Association of Counties Legislative Committee, is that what the Michigan Tax Tribunal individual is doing is he is telling businesses, occupied businesses, that they are entitled to be assessed as vacant. And that's not, that's not right. That's not fair to business owners that don't have big box stores, that have small businesses and are paying property taxes on their small businesses. That's not fair to them, and that's what's occurring. And that's why I think it's important to move forward with this. It's putting an undue burden on small business owners.
Any other comment? So this will be on the agenda next month, okay? Next is the budget guidelines, 2015. These have to be adopted by us.
Right, we need, we need some kind of guidance on what to put into the budget and how to structure it when we make the recommendation. That's not to say that it can't be changed after it's, you know, proposed, but going in, we should know, we need to have some idea of what we can start with.
I make a motion that we adopt the budget guidelines for 2015, as outlined by our administrator.
Second? I have a motion to support by Inman. Any other discussion? Charlie?
When we had done our 2014 special sessions, we had some questions that were never really answered. And this will come out as we go into the 15 budget, is that what you're trying to say, actually?
Yes.
With this respective cost of payroll, lawn maintenance, some of these things we've done.
Right, right.
We will see those numbers, huh?
Yes. I don't want to, you know, rush through this, I'd like to at least tell you that, you know, in this process, I've asked the departments to submit a kind of what's changing scenario. I talked to the department heads and elected officials this afternoon, kind of said, "That's a really important new document that's going to be submitted with the budget that we're going to, that's going to follow us throughout the process, so that we can focus on those things, and you can be informed of what the changes are being, you know, as they're being proposed inside the budget." And then we're going to talk to you about, you know, those priorities as we kind of go through budget hearings with the departments. So, you know, I want to, you know, this is a starting point. It doesn't have to stop with this, if you can think of other things that you want, other guidelines you want to add or change, you know, we need to, you know, you need to do that within the next month or so, because when we get into July, we're going to start talking with all the departments about their budgets, making sure we understand what's in them. And then, you know, my, the way I've always done it, and the way that works, is to figure out what the cost of continuing current services are, and then change, and then outline how we're going to deviate from those current services. We're going to cut something, we're going to add something, or, you know, and why we're going to do that, and how much it's going to cost. It's easiest to take it from what you're doing today, and then add, do the pluses and minuses. And then you can talk about, you know, the priorities of each service, or each position, or each, you know, or different ways of doing things.
I'm going to come back to the three-year budget, and I'd like to see that as part of it.
That's part of the form that I've given to departments, to also talk about what changes they expect two to three years in the future.
But it doesn't say anything here about that, so.
No, and as we, when we do a recommended budget to you this year, we're going to plug those numbers in, and we're going to give you a list of assumptions for 2016 and 2017 to adopt as well, and show you what those numbers look like in 2016 and 2017, and have you adopt all of it, a three-year budget this year.
Any other comments from commissioners, any other questions? Charlie?
Dave, on item number four, the Controller will prepare the recommended budget for all employees using substantially the same wage and benefit provisions that were ratified in the end of 2013.
Right.
Is that a good assumption?
Well, that's a, the question is, is what do we put in the budget for wages and benefits?
I guess is that realistic, is my question.
If we put it in there, it's going to assume savings in certain areas, and it's going to assume costs, primarily a one and a half percent wage increase. You got new, you got half our employee population that we are still, you know, giving them the higher level of health insurance. It costs 22% more than it did the previous year. And the other half of your employees, it costs about 1% more than it did in the previous year. So you're getting the savings on the half that settled in 2013, but the other half still has to be done. They still haven't gotten rid of retiree healthcare, they still haven't done all the things that were part of that wage and benefit package. And the assumption is, is let's put the budget together, this, what this guideline says is, let's put the budget together, assuming that all that is going to be adopted by the other bargaining units, and we'll do the same thing with the remaining employees for 2015, and see what those numbers look like. Now that doesn't mean that after you've looked at those numbers and you've seen where you end up, that you can't change something. But, you know, we're going to go and, we're going to be talking very soon about our negotiation strategy, and, you know, how that might be modified. So this isn't the be-all and end-all, this is just a guideline for us to get started with, so that we can project costs and give them to departments, and they can see what they look like.
So you're saying we're going to go into this negotiation next year with this caveat here? Are you going to try to?
Well, that would be something we'll talk about in closed session.
I mean, do these come together somehow?
This is how we're going to put the budget together, that's all this says. And if, this is the guideline today. If we go into negotiations in closed session about negotiation strategy, and we change this from what it is, we can come out of, you know, we can come out of that and take different guideline, put a different guideline in there.
Anybody else have any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Next is the calendar.
Yes, this is a statutory requirement.
It's on your desk.
It's on your desk, it's, it indicates that on July 7th, the department heads and elected officials will submit their budget requests to the Administrator Controller. There are going to be some exceptions to that, we know. For example, the Commission on Aging wants time to look at the budget before they submit it, but it should be shortly thereafter. And the same thing probably with the Parks Board, will give them a little extra time to get that in, but, so that their boards can review it. On September 17th, we plan to get the recommended budget to the board, and then on October 29th, we expect that the board will be adopting the budget. These are just, it's statutory that we put these guideline, or this budget calendar into place. There's nothing in the statute that says we have to follow it, strangely enough. It's just a guide for everybody to follow, and we try to hit these targets, but there's nothing that happens if you don't hit this, if you adopt the budget two weeks later, no harm, no foul.
Mr. Thomas?
Motion to approve.
Support. Any other discussion? I have one question, last year, we spent a lot of time on the budget. I don't see any time in here for the commissioners to have, any time for them to have a discussion other than at the meeting. Do you want to have another meeting to look at the budget individually, other than at the Ways and Means meeting?
We can add those as we need them.
We can do that, I mean, it's just, these are just budget guidelines, but just know that if you're interested in adding a date in here, you're going to want to add the dates between the September 17th and October 29th, probably.
I think in order to be able to evaluate how much additional we need for those discussions, we're going to have to see that draft budget from September 17th.
Okay. Then we can make that decision from there.
You know, from that point, then we determine how much input we choose to have on that budget.
Chris?
I'd like to ask a stupid question, can we get it earlier than September 17? Let me, let me ask it another way, is there a possibility, and what do you think that possibility would be?
It's possible, I mean, we can, we can try and push it forward.
And slim left town?
You know, I was telling the elected officials and department heads this afternoon that if, you know, all the, you know, all the signs come together properly, if the revenue sharing is, you know, we find out in June that revenue sharing is going to stay included in the budget, and we're going to get full funding in 2015, if we get our MERS report in June, and not in August, if we get some idea of where health insurance is going from our, from our new agent, which, I'm understanding they're going to try and give us a number from, they're going to work over Priority Health.
Hello?
And we're going to try and get some idea, some pretty good idea of what to put in our budget, so we won't have to wait for those numbers. We got really put off last year on that very important number. Yeah, we should be able to move it along this year. So, I'm not going to give you a, "Yeah, we can do it sooner," but we're going to try, we'll try.
I appreciate it.
I'm sure we will see the draft as soon as it's available, yeah.
Yeah, and as soon as we know where we stand, revenues versus expenditures on the current service side, we'll let you know what that looks like.
It will not be like it was last year.
No, it won't. Yes, I do.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Next is the Workforce Development Board.
If I could do a quick introduction.
On your table is some answers from Leonok County?
Yes, yes. If I could just do a quick introduction, and then we have Elaine Wood, the Chief Executive Officer for both the Workforce Development Board and the Northwest Michigan Council of Governments here today. Thank you, Elaine, for coming to help me with this item. As I indicated back at Ways and Means, we asked, I asked that this be placed on the agenda under New Business. This is something that the Northwest Michigan Council of Governments and Workforce Development Board officers got together as the executive committee felt was important, that we give some information to all the counties that are involved in the, in the Workforce Development Board side, as well as the 10 counties that are in the interlocal agreement for the Northwest Michigan Council of Governments, that Governor Snyder is giving strong focus to how to create regional prosperity boards that would, could work together and accomplish some cost efficiencies and better performance in terms of job creation, job training, those kinds of things. And so, as you know, we have a separate Workforce Development Board, and we have a separate Northwest Michigan Council of Boards. Elaine Wood is the Chief Executive Officer for both boards, and Northwest Michigan Council of Governments is the fiscal agent for both entities, and a county commissioner from each of the 10 counties sit on the Northwest Michigan Council of Governments Board. The issue at hand is that what we want to do is create, we want to be a little bit ahead of the curve for the governor, and we think it's a good idea that we do this anyways, is that what we're finding is the majority of the agenda for the Workforce Development Board, which meets separately, and the agenda for the Northwest Michigan Council of Governments Board is virtually the same. And it just tasks Elaine and her staff for preparing two packets, having two board meetings, and we think we would work better if we brought both boards together at the same time, dates and periods, and just do one meeting instead of two. And that particular combination of getting together could accommodate the governor's vision on a regional prosperity board, if that comes into law next year. So what we'd like to do is just get a little bit ahead of the curve, but in the meantime, the premise is that the Council of Governments and all the standing agreements would predominantly stay the same, as well as the Workforce Development Board, and we appoint some of those, and the Chamber of Commerce appoints those throughout the 10 counties. And we think it's a good idea that we just inform all the counties that are involved, the 10 counties, of what we'd like to proceed with, and this is kind of the first step in saying, you know, it does make sense to bring both boards and have them meet together for the cost efficiency of preparing packets, the delivery of information, the staff time, to, you know, it's just, it's shaving a lot of costs off for both sides, and it makes us more efficient. So that's, in a nutshell, what we're trying to do. There are some other things we'd like to accomplish by meeting together that would create some more efficiencies and help hopefully the process that both boards are working on. So what we're trying to do tonight is to do a, just kind of a simple letter or a resolution of support that I'm recommending, that we think we're moving forward in the right direction in terms of the cost efficiency of having both boards meet together, and being better prepared if the governor moves forward with this prosperity initiative legislation. And with that, I would like to invite Elaine Wood, if I could, to the podium, just to make sure that I haven't missed anything. And then I'd like to propose at least putting it on the floor, get a resolution of support, you know, putting the two boards together for these efficiencies.
Elaine, introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Elaine Wood, Chief Executive Officer of the Northwest Michigan Council of Governments and the Northwest Michigan Workforce Development Board. In one word.
Ta-da.
Yeah. Larry touched on the cost efficiencies, and that's definitely part of this. It's probably not the major part of this, although it's definitely there. I think, you know, there's this whole regional prosperity initiative that the governor has, and many other states are doing similar things. And when you think about the work that we do, it doesn't matter if we're helping an individual or a village, or some other community, or a business, it all comes down to more and better jobs, economic growth and business growth. And so, business is really our ultimate customer. And they are at the table for the workforce about 70% of what our organization does, but they're not at the table for the other 30%. And more and more over the years, I think everybody is seeing how all these things interrelate. You can't talk about job creation without talking about transportation issues, or housing, or education. So, everything that we do at our organization is really pretty integrated. So we're looking, we really want to accomplish in advance of legislation, which will happen next year, I'm pretty sure. We want to accomplish a broader base of dialogue. We want to recognize that it's not just counties that we serve, it's villages, cities, townships to some extent, road commissions, nonprofits of all kinds, businesses, individuals, chambers of commerce, economic development groups, and so on. And so, these regional prosperity boards, as they've been envisioned, are a way to bring all these different sectors together at the same table, to talk about issues related to community improvement, economic improvement. We, as Larry said, we're not changing any of our legal structure, because there is not legislation in place yet. So we're just keeping everything the way it is now, and just having our two boards agree to work together, meet together, discuss issues together, et cetera. Each board will still retain its ability to meet separately whenever they wish to. And we're, another thing that we're trying to accomplish is that we have, we have too many names. And, I mean, to just be blunt, we'd like to have a, we'd like to do business as one entity instead of two, as a public-private partnership, which we are. We would like to have a name that represents more what we do. to have a name that represents more what we do, and so that's part of this initiative as well. The governor, I think, is really trying and following suit with a number of other states, Florida, Texas, Utah, others, to push some of the things that happen at the state level now more to the local and regional level, especially as they relate to economic issues. And that's part of what, that's really the main thing that this is all about. So, he is aligning all the state departments to these 10 regions, so that it makes it easier for us here on the local level to interact and get what we need and put resources together. So, Leelanaw County had submitted some questions to me, and I work with, I've been working with our attorney to put these documents together and answer these questions. You have a copy of that that just came to you today. I think it seems complicated at first glance, but it really is not complicated. It's just a pretty simple agreement to do business together as two boards. So, I'm just here to answer your questions or any concerns that you have, and...
Elaine, if we were to pass a resolution of support, could you give me just a real short framework for the resolution you'd like to see on the floor, in terms of the verbiage or the wordage?
Yes, but I don't think it has to be a resolution. I think it could just be a motion. The document...
You need a letter of support or a resolution?
Just a motion of support would be enough.
And it would just be reflected in our minutes?
Yeah.
That's all you need?
And I don't really need it for any formal reason. I just want it as an acknowledgement that you know what we're doing, you know why we're doing it, and you think it's okay.
You going to make that motion, Larry?
Yeah, I would make that motion, that Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners support the initiative to combine the Workforce Development Board and Northwest Michigan Council of Governments Board to work together in this regional initiative as outlined by Elaine Wood.
Support.
Have a support by Weelock. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Sonny.
You know, I think, you know, and I appreciate the questions that Leelanaw County asks, because I think it did kind of...
Helps clarify.
Flesh out some things there a little bit, but...
Right.
You know, throughout the state, there's all kinds of this thing to push this stuff regionally.
Right.
You know, and some of it I've really been opposed to myself, because I think we were doing a damn good job of it right here in our hometown by ourselves without having to do it regionally. But, that being said, I think the people in Northwest Michigan are very fortunate to have the cooperation that we have. The public-private partnerships that are here are unlike any that you'll find anywhere. You know, I recently spoke at the groundbreaking at the Grand Traverse Commons for the new Cordia facility, and, you know, without question, that Grand Traverse Commons is the greatest public partnership, private partnership, anywhere in the state of Michigan and probably anywhere in the United States. You know, we've got just huge things, where we've brought all these different private organizations in together. They've combined with brownfield authorities and public EDCs, and we've been able to provide huge services to our community. You know, there are things that the government can do better than private just because of the way it is. You know, there's a small list. But there are also, you know, and I had the discussion earlier today, there are things, for example, in housing, where nonprofit organizations have the ability to get money from Michigan, things that we do not qualify for. So, without those partnerships, we can't get the maximum benefit for the citizens of our community. With, by expanding some of these public-private partnerships, we can maximize the services that we're providing to the citizens of this community.
Good, well put.
I think that's very, very true, and I just want to address one other thing that you said. I know that the word "regional" is a scary word to some people right now. I just want to reassure you that as a regional entity, we have no legal authority to do the things that you do as a local unit of government. We don't do taxation, we don't do zoning, we don't do ordinances, we don't do any of those things, and nothing about this changes any of that. Our role as a region is to be able to bring home some of most, as many of our federal tax dollars as we can, most of which require a certain population base in order for those dollars to flow. And that's why in rural areas, counties group up together into these consortiums like ours. So, I think that's something to keep in mind, too.
Other comments? See none? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming.
Next on the agenda is the cremation fee. Sonny, you had...
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we reconsider the establishment of the cremation fee that we adopted in April of this year.
Second. I have a motion. Do I have any discussion? Sonny?
Well, I guess the reason, you know, I have a lot of respect for all of our staff and our staff's recommendations, you know, and I think when we seen this recommendation to have this fee and the reviews, that, you know, the vast majority of counties throughout the state and throughout the community, or throughout the country, do charge a fee for this, and we did not, you know, and thinking in mind all of the budget constraints that we have, you know, I think it made some logical sense to approve this. Since that time, I've had opportunity to think about it a little bit, and many, many comments from citizens within our community that are opposed to the possibility that we're charging this fee. You know, I've heard the term "death tax" and all kinds of other comments. You know, the fact, the bottom line is, the revenue for, from this source is going to be somewhere in the $5,000 a year range. At least in my mind, $5,000 a year is not worth upsetting as many people and constituents of this community as I've talked to over the last three weeks.
Mr. Lathrop?
Just an educational point of order for me. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. What are the rules about passing things and bringing them back up again and voting on them? Are we within those rules?
A majority of the board has to agree to reconsider the issue.
And then we reconsider it. So, this is just a motion to reconsider?
That's right.
Right.
We have to pass the motion to reconsider.
And then we can talk about...
If that happens, then we can have a motion to rescind it, or modify it, or anything else. But first, we have to have a motion to reconsider.
Which we have, so...
And it takes eight, it takes four of us, five of us.
Just a majority.
Simple majority.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Well, the comments I've had from the public have been about 70% negative.
Larry?
Well, I haven't had that much public comment, but I was reflecting on the whole thing after the vote, and knowing my personal situation with the cost of dealing this with my family, losing mother, father, sister, brother, all in 24 months, and dealing with funeral homes and the expense of plots and everything that goes with the funeral stuff, it amounted up to in excess of $40,000 for four funerals. And so, not even expecting this discussion to occur, I was going to, I was going to say something about this waiver, about, I was giving some thought over the time period that, you know, it's a tremendous cost today to do funerals, and even if it's just a simple cremation, that it's just, in some cases, for some families, it's cost prohibitive to even do a funeral. So, I just felt different about it after I had time to reflect on my own personal situation, that, you know, I just feel that government shouldn't be adding more to the cost of funerals.
Larry, I'm going to get you on tracks. That is not the discussion at this point.
It is the discussion.
No, the discussion is whether or not we want to reconsider.
Yeah.
So, let's have the discussion on whether or not we can reconsider.
That's the reason I want to have a motion reconsider, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if we could just keep that discussion on whether or not we want to reconsider the motion, if we can do, keep our discussion in that vein, I would appreciate it. Other commissioners? Charlie?
I would support reconsidering it.
Is there any more discussion on reconsidering of the motion? We have roll call vote, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weelock?
Yes.
Enman?
Yes.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Rennie?
Yes.
Lemkul?
No. Motion's carried. Now, we can have the discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to rescind the cremation fee that was adopted by this board prior to its enactment of June 1st.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion? Mr. Thomas?
No. I just, I thought you were going to ask for your support.
I have a question. I, too, have gotten some feedback on this. When I have explained to people that Grand Traverse County residents are shouldering more of a burden than is fair, because we have a regional hospital and we pay for examinations for Leelanaw, Benzie, Antrim, these residents that come to Grand Traverse County and pass. I was asked, and so I'm going to ask the question, is there a way to differentiate between Grand Traverse County residents and out-of-county residents regarding this issue?
See, Wendy Truitt is on vacation.
Okay.
And she's the, she's the content area expert on this particular topic.
Okay.
I know that a medical examiner has to certify cause of death for every death in Grand Traverse County, doesn't matter where they came from, and then the cremation is usually carried out after it's gone to a funeral home, or it's carried out right from the morgue. But I can't tell you what the, you know, what the hoops the medical examiner has to go through with each cremation. I don't, I'm...
I'll talk to Wendy when she gets there.
Wendy Truitt has to tell us why, you know, a certain dollar amount. I don't think it's a five-second...
All right.
...review, but I can't say for sure.
Other than my personal thoughts are very related. I thought when Dan Johnkoff came up at our previous meeting and explained that something like this, if people could not pay it, he would have to pay it. And so, you know, I'm not sure that that's a fee that we want to pass on to the funeral business if people are unable to pay that fee. So, I'm just, it's just, to me, it's just not worth the taxation for, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here.
Dan?
Well, you know, if what Sonny says is correct, that all we're going to collect is $5,000 on this, and then you throw on at the exclusions that we're going to vote on maybe, it's going to be even less than that. So...
She said 1,200 cremations a year, so that's...
She my point, I mean...
Six grand, you take out the exceptions, we're getting five grand.
That is worth the insult to the community.
Dean, with your iPads, you can actually call up, this was discussed, and Wendy Truitt, our health officer, provided a summary of this, April 16. I'll summarize it for you. Briefly, we were anticipating 900 to 1,000 permits will be requested. Her opening paragraph expressed that, you know, the medical examiner does have to review and approve, and, you know, we're currently, you're all aware of our issues with our medical examiner regarding the fact that that will probably cost us more as we enter into a more, probably a different arrangement. But there are, there are costs, there's time that's incurred, and Wendy was anticipating that that cost to provide the services of the medical examiner would increase. We've had a very good arrangement and a relationship with Dr. Houghton, but in her second paragraph, this was April 16, 2014, the summary that she provided for Ways and Means, because of that increase in time and the increase in, you know, just requirements, and as Dave mentioned, I can't explain what that time would be, but we were anticipating that, I guess the one point that I wanted to indicate, it's more, it would be more than 5,000 in revenue. If you had 1,000 permits at $50 a permit, that's 50,000 in revenue, 10 times the amount that Commissioner Weelock had mentioned. But, you know, with Wendy not here, I don't feel that the staff has a chance to kind of defend the recommendation that was made. Obviously, this is your decision, but as your finance director, I can't just sit back and say that, you know, this is okay. We had a discussion. You have the right to obviously rescind what you did, but, you know, that's your choice. I don't agree with it.
I also would like to say that I don't agree with rescinding this, but only, you know, the biggest reason is Wendy's not here to finish the discussion. And, you know, I think that's really a disservice to our employees when we start doing something, when they're not able to be here to help us to build, go through this process and to make sure that we make the right decisions. You know, this is not a 5,000, it's a 50,000. And when you start looking at the cost of a medical examiner, if we're going to have to increase our wages in order to attract good quality medical examiners, if Dr. Houghton is not able to continue, or if sometimes he doesn't, decides not to continue with that job, we're going to pay more money for that. And also, it's important to note that we are probably going to need a pathologist in our community, eventually down the road. This is a way for us to help to pay for that. So, everybody now has to go to Grand Rapids if you're going to have an autopsy. We're going to need to bring somebody locally. We're going to need somebody in northern Michigan. We're going to need somebody, this is not going to be just Grand Traverse County's problem. This is going to be like, you know, you talk about the council of governments with a 10-county area that maybe have to get together and cost share to bring somebody like that here into our hospital here locally. I really am opposed to rescinding this. I think it's a mistake. It shows that we don't have the leadership to make sure that we make the right decisions, and I would hope that we would vote against this motion. Any other discussion? We will have a roll call vote.
Weelock?
Yes.
Enman?
Yes.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Rennie?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Lemkul?
No. Motion passes. Okay, next on our agenda is the second public comment.
Mr. Chairman, is there any reason that we can't go back and rehash this and maybe get more facts, one way or the other?
It would have to be a whole new motion.
Well, it would have to be a whole new month.
True.
We could ask Wendy to come in and do it again at Health and Human Services. Is she going to be back then?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah. So, we could probably, it could be brought back?
Well, I think it's something that's going to, if we're going to have it, we're going to have to sell it to the public, too.
Well, that's, I've been trying to do that with my Facebook. I've been responding to everybody to let them know, so.
Oh, we already voted on it.
Yeah.
We have to wait a month.
What I object to is I object to Grand Traverse County taxpayers picking up the tab for other counties.
Go to Ryan.
I do, too.
That's what I object to. We shouldn't have to do that, and there's got to be a way around it. So, I'm absolutely in favor of revisiting this issue. I just...
Well, I think the issue's bigger than the cremation fee. The cremation fee was a revenue line item to help compensate for the medical examiner's office.
I understand that.
I think, I think the issue is how we properly fund the medical examiner. I don't think, you know, the little piece about the cremation part, that's, you know, that's a minor discussion because it only affects 1,200 people or 1,000 people. But the fact is, is that we still, it's not unlike all the rest of the budget items that Dave talked about earlier tonight. The medical examiner's office, the medical examiner's budget center is something we have to figure out how... is something we have to figure out how we're going to fund. You know, there are services that we provide that we have options of whether we want to do them or not. Medical examiner is not one of them. We are required statutorily to provide a medical examiner. How we're going to properly fund that, whether it is at the level that we're funding it now or whether it's at the level that we're going to have to fund it if Dr. Houghton chooses to retire and we have to go outside, we have to do something regionally, whether we have to contract with the company out of Saginaw, you know, there's all different kinds of opportunities here. But the fact is, the issue for me is not the cremation fee. The issue is how do we properly fund the statutorily required responsibility of providing a medical examiner to the community of Grand Traverse?
Chris?
I'd like to ask, what is, what's probably gonna sound like a dumb blonde question. We coordinate, and I appreciate you not coming.
Probably not, I assume.
Nobody nodded.
We, yeah, we coordinate with other counties, you know, with veterans, services, et cetera, et cetera. Why couldn't we, I mean, we can ask, why couldn't we approach our surrounding counties and say, "Look, this is what's happening to us. We just want to be fair to our taxpayers." And generally speaking, other boards usually are willing to be fair. Can we try that approach?
We can. You know, I've approached all of my colleagues in the general area, Benzie County, Leland County, Antrim County. That's about it for right now. And Wexford has their own thing going, so, you know, they might want to join with us or they might want to go south. But, you know, as far as, you know, wherever we're the closest hospital, they're gonna be transporting the bodies to us.
Yeah.
And if they die at the scene, it's that county's responsibility. If they die at the hospital, when they arrive at the hospital, they're dead, they're our problem. And that's the statutory, there are no two ways about it. And I've spoken with the people from Ingham. If that's changed, because we had that issue back in Ingham-Clinton Eaton, back in the day, and it has not changed. It is still the county...
I understand, I understand it hasn't changed, and I understand it is what it is. But what I'm suggesting is, couldn't we open up a dialogue to surrounding counties and ask them to pay a percentage of what is an unfair burden on our taxpayers?
It might be part of a larger discussion. I mean, I think the medical examiner, the morgue, unclaimed bodies, all those issues that some funeral homes are helping subsidize. Who picks up the body that's found in the snowbank and carts them to where? You know, what do you do with unclaimed bodies? Who's gonna call the relatives and who's, or try to find a relative or whatever? All those are duties that have to be done, and they're really the county medical examiner's responsibility. And in some cases, the hospital's doing it, in some cases, the funeral directors are doing it. And the day is coming, the day is coming that we're gonna need to do something regionally, and especially with, you know, the idea of a forensic pathologist to come into the area and save us all a lot of travel time back and forth. And plus have that expertise, and law enforcement would have a person here that knows their stuff. That would be a great advantage to all of us in the region. So, I've already talked to my colleagues in the neighboring counties about this, and they know it's an issue that's coming.
The other player in that conversation is Monson Hospital.
Absolutely.
And just remember, Monson is picking up Wexford. He's picking up Cadillac.
One of the things that we're pretty fortunate with, you know, and I understand that we're talking about what we pay to Dr. Houghton, but I believe Leland and Antrim also still pay him. So, you know, if we were looking to fund a medical examiner solely for Grand Traverse County without the compensation that he also receives from Leland and Antrim, we'd be paying a lot more money than we are now.
That's right. Charlie?
Is there a number that tells us how many of these deaths are from outside the county versus inside the county?
Wendy said 20 percent.
Between 20 and 30 percent, depending on the time. One other thing, I think, and it touches on what our chairman said. We've gone through this. We passed it, then we had an outrage, and we did some waivers. I think that's a signal right there that maybe we didn't do enough due diligence initially to make a motion that would stand on its own. When you started making special cases for different people, you're muddying the waters, and who's to say something might not come of later again? So, I think it should be revisited. The public should be made more aware of what this is really all about as far as the cost. See if we can make a good decision.
I might direct the public to what Dean Bott's comment was is at our meeting, you know, in May, you said...
April 16th.
April 16th.
April 16th. Go onto our website. You can see the agenda item, and you could also pull up the video and see the actual discussion from the funeral home and from our Wendy, from our health department. I would encourage everybody to go into that website and be able to look at that because we did have a really good discussion. And I felt very comfortable doing what we did, other than I felt the fee should have been higher because of the cost, of what, our costs are that much greater. So, anyway, other comments on that? Let's go on to the rest of the commissioner reports. Just to let you know, the brownfield this morning did approve a brownfield grant to Kingsley to, for a asbestos abatement for a building that's going to be tore down in there, inside the village. So, that's, that was approved. And we also are gonna be looking at, in the future, having a study session about what we're really doing in brownfield, where's our goals, and how we should be operating in the future.
Did you skip second public comment?
Did I? I might have.
I think you did.
I'm sorry, I tried to go to public comment, and you guys started...
We're watching, we're watching.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make public comment? I apologize for skipping over that, so...
Nobody wants to talk anymore.
Please, no, please. Okay, commissioner reports. Any other commissioner reports? Sonny?
Just, I believe next week you're going to receive a report from our planning department to talk about the news discussion about the MISTHA grant that may or may not be extended to Homestretch for the Depot project. As you may remember, Grand Traverse County has committed to roughly $300,000 toward the infrastructure improvement of that project. A sizable MISTHA grant has expired, and there's discussion whether or not that will be extended, and if it's extended, how it will be administered. So, I believe that, you know, I just had a real brief discussion earlier, and I believe you'll be getting a report from the planning department next week in that regard.
That's correct.
Director Eagle called me several days ago and wanted comments on it because I am your representative to the land bank and the housing task force. I told him at that time, to the best of my knowledge, there was still the hope that when the grant money was actually distributed, that extension would be granted, and I hadn't heard anything different from that. And as far as Grand Traverse County's commitment, it was to the Depot project as a whole for infrastructure, and Habitat for Humanities has already started construction under part of that project. If you remember, that was a partnership between Habitat for Humanity, Homestretch, and Grand Traverse County. So, two of the partners are still in the game for sure. And where Homestretch is gonna be, we're not going to know for a little bit of time. But you will be getting a report next week from the planning department in that regard.
Yeah, it'll be something in your packet.
Next. I have a couple of things. Borden River was named the top 10 waters to watch. This is quite a coup for conservation efforts or the National Fish and Habitat Partnership. So, that's gonna be, that's, you know, saying a lot on what we're doing with the dams and what they're gonna be doing. Also, we want to thank Grand Traverse County Sheriff for appointing Chris Barchef to Garfield Township as its new lieutenant?
Actually, CPO.
A CPO. He's part of the CPO program for Garfield Township. We're looking forward to Lieutenant Barchef to be able to be part of Garfield Township. And then also, starting next week, Monday, is Smart Commute Week, and I would encourage everybody to take public transportation, ride your bike, carpool, whatever you can do to be able to reduce the amount of traffic in our communities. Any other discussion to the board? Notices? You have your calendars?
The administrator had an item.
I just wanted to inform you that I have been in contact several times now with Charles Peterson about the removal of the trash rakes and the other equipment at the Saban Dam. And he is going to be getting equipment down there and probably pulling the equipment out next week. Just wanted to let you know that in case someone brings it up.
Anything else from you, Dave? Anything else on the board? We have no closed session? Motion to adjourn. Second? We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, oh, by the way, he's still...